Hello, City of Conway. I'd like to welcome you to the May Planning Commission meeting. We will begin our meeting with a roll call. I'm just going to shout out if I miss somebody, let me know. I have myself, Brandon Rule, Delencia Hervey, Ray Williams, Rebecca, Drew Gaynor,
Present.
Arthur Ingram.
I'm here, present.
Thank you. Letitia's not here, I believe. Brian Townsend.
Present.
Thank you. And Ann Tucker. So we all have all but three, so we have a quorum.
Do you got, you counted me, right? Delencia, I'm sorry, I don't think I confirmed.
Yes, ma'am, I got you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, before we get started, let's review our minutes from April 20th meeting. Commissioners, any comments or questions on those that Lauren sent out via email? Seeing that there is none, bring us in a call. Anybody that can make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Second, Drew.
Rebecca and Drew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Before we get started with our subdivision review, let me do a little housekeeping notes. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public hearing items. Items reviewed on this agenda will be considered by the City Council as early as May 26, 2020. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within 30 days of the Planning Commission denial, with the exception of decisions made by the Planning Commission acting as the Board of Zoning Adjustment. If an item appealed to the City Council, appealed to the City Council, a public, a public notice will be placed on the property and will also be noted at ConwayArkansas.gov. We'll jump right into our first agenda item. We have three subdivision items tonight, and then we'll get to our public hearing. First subdivision item is a request for preliminary plat approval of Cindy's Place subdivision. I think we have Mr. Levi.
Yes, I'm here. So yes, just quick briefing on just kind of the format of tonight. This is kind of the first time that the Commission at large will be reviewing subdivisions. Typically, in the past, we have had the subdivision committee. So just a real quick brief overview and reminder for our commissioners that subdivisions and these preliminary plats are considered an objective technical review of the regulations inside subdivision regulations and the zoning requirements and as well as implementation of the master street plan. So what that means is essentially if it meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations, the zoning district in which it lies and meets and is consistent with the master street plan, it, it should be approved. So there's very little subjectivity in this. It either meets the technical requirements or it doesn't, kind of thing. So with that, we'll jump into the first item is, so this is a request for preliminary plat at 705 Fairview Lane. It's approximately 330 feet south, the intersection of Fairview Street and Hardy Street. The applicant is requesting preliminary approval of a six lot subdivision. The subdivision includes also, and like I said, this is at 705 Fairview, but the subdivision also includes a vacant lot immediately to the west that fronts on South Center Street. The properties are zoned R2, which is low density residential. Lots one through five are proposed 7,000 square feet and would meet the lot requirements for two family development, while lot six would measure at 6,800 square feet and would meet the requirements for single family development. Lots one through five are accessed by South Center Street, while lot six is accessed by Fairview Street. And then six feet of right away is proposed to be dedicated for South Center Street as a part of this plat. The required five foot dedication is not shown on the plat. However, staff has included a condition of approval requiring that dedication. As always, with the implementation of the subdivision regulations, sidewalks are required as a part of this plat. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent on the completion of the amended punch list and the associated conditions of approval. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Hill? Okay, seeing none. I believe we have Bobby on. Bobby, did you have anything to add? And are you aware of the eight conditions listed?
Yeah, I don't think anything's on there that, you know, that is a big deal. We can, you know, we can work with all that.
Okay, great. All right, if we have no further comments or questions, Commissioners will bring it in. I guess we need to make a motion like normal. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the listed conditions.
Second.
You gotta make a second?
Okay, I heard a first from Ray and a second from Delencia. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Bobby. Moving on, we'll go to the next subdivision item, request for preliminary plat approval at Trison Lane subdivision.
Yeah, so item 1B is a preliminary plat located at 1500 Trison Lane. This is at the northeast corner of Trison Lane and East Stephen Morgan Road. As said, applicants requesting approval of a seven lot subdivision. Property zone O2, which is our quiet office zoning district. The proposed lots range from 7,000 square feet to 24,800 square feet. All these meet the lot requirements of that site zoning classification. Lots one, six, and seven would be accessed by Trison Lane, while lots two through five would be accessed by shared driveways along East Stephen Morgan Road as pursuant to the subdivision regulations, sidewalks are required along both street frontages of the plat. No waivers were requested as a part of this plat. Staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon the completion of the punch list and the associated conditions of approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Hit my button. The only question I have, so we're assuming five new curb cuts at East Stephen Morgan, potentially?
Well, they have the shared drive, so you can kind of see them shown there on the plat. So you would be looking at two, two curb cuts for lots two through five.
Oh, I see it now, okay.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's not, not one for each lot.
Perfect.
And I would assume one would be accessed probably by Trison.
And those are just right there together, but there's only five lots, so I guess wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, so totally should be looking at two additional curb cuts from what's there.
But they're only, those two curb cuts access, like just that subdivision?
That's correct. They would be shared driveways, essentially.
Okay.
Any further discussion? How do we have a representative from the owner? Bodick or Hamilton Properties or Tyler Group? Okay. Bring it back in, Commissioners. Call it to a vote. Anyone like to make a motion?
But that just goes along with that, that subdivision that they've already started there, right behind that property. So I move that we approve with the listed conditions.
My second.
I heard a first from Ray and a second from, was it Brian?
Drew Gaynor.
Drew, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And we will move to item three, request for preliminary plat approval at Robin, Robin Mar, excuse me, subdivision phase two. You're on mute, Levi.
Apologies. Yes, this, this is located just immediately east of the terminus of Overcup Drive and Phase One of Robin Mar subdivision. The applicant is sequesting preliminary approval of 43 lot subdivision. This would represent Phase Two. The property is zone R1, single family residential. The proposed lots range from 8,400 square feet to 9,800 square feet, meeting all the requirements of the R1 zoning district. Lots proposed to be accessed by the extension of Overcup Drive and Lilac Drive. And additionally, the plat proposes construction of one new connection street. The street extensions and new streets all include five foot sidewalks and six and a half feet of green space. No waivers are requested as a part of this request. Planning staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon the amended punch list, which has been satisfied to this point and the associated conditions of approval. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, the floor is yours. Okay. Mr. Watson? Great, thank you. Mr. Watson, did you have anything to add, questions or concerns?
I do. This is Tom Watson. That was supposed to be a 60 lot subdivision instead of 43. 43 was our first attempt at it, and then we added the street lilac down to the end of the cul-de-sac. It's supposed to have been 60 up. I think David White's supposed to be on, on this meeting also from Tim Tyler's. But yeah, we switched it over to 60 lots months ago.
Is David on here?
Well, I'm, I'm on here, Kev, or I'm on here, Tom.
Yeah.
That, what, what you say, I'm not sure how many lots that is, but that's where, where we discussed and where the phase line is. You can't go any further west, or you can't go any further east without extending the road all the way out to Donaghy. So that's as far, far east as you can go.
No, remember we extended that one lower street that, I give my directions. It'd be the North Street down to the coast, include the cul-de-sac, because we had to bring the sewer from that end up to those 43.
True, true. But this, we're, phase line, where we had the phase line before.
So, so what we have submitted with the application was the 43 lots included in Phase Two and then the street and drainage and construction plans for Phases Two and Three.
Yes.
Those have been approved with the Transportation Department and so, but the actual preliminary plat only showed Phase Two, so that's what was reviewed. So it's kind of about all of Phase Two and Three construction plans are, were submitted and were approved. However, the preliminary plat was only for the 43 lots.
At this point, what would it be to, to add the other street in? Would that just be a, a notice of middle?
That's correct. Procedurally, it would just be another preliminary plat submitted and would come back through just like this one. But the street and drainage plans have already been approved for that phase, so it would be a, probably a rather simple review.
Okay, all right, to add that one street. So you got the street and drainage for the, for the other, whatever, that'd be 17 lots.
Correct. Transportation has reviewed and approved those plans.
The part you're talking, the part you're talking about, Kevin, is, or Tom, is that the one to the north, the North Street there? Going down, we'll tell the fact?
That's correct. It was, yeah, it was always supposed to have been added. I don't know how, how we missed that.
But we can add that.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what we need to do. And I guess you and I can talk after this meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what do you want to, so what do you want to do about this tonight? You want to get them approve this and then add that next month on another, another part or what? Maybe with this month and you're, you're all the way to another month.
I understand, but, but our whole deal was to start construction tomorrow.
And, and I'll interject, I mean, the, the approval of tonight is the only thing that would prevent you from doing that. So if that's what your goal is, I would, I would suggest keeping this on the agenda. Let the Commission act on that. With you having street and drainage plans approved, you would have everything you need to start construction on Phase Two. And then I would have Tim then submit the plat for Phase Three and go ahead and get that going, so.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll bring it back into Commission. So Commissioners, we're looking at the review and approval of the 43 lots as submitted. And then they'll readdress the additional lots next month.
But as I understand it, that would be part of Phase, well, the, the back part of this has already been done with Phase Two and Three, and then he's just bringing in, it would be just like a simple addition next month to add the other lots. So we're just, okay. Okay, well, I recommend approval of this with the stated conditions.
My second.
We got a first from Delencia and a second from Drew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to our public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. Went too far. Okay, our first request for a conditional use permit, church in R1.
Yes, so this is a conditional use permit application for, located at 1301 Sunset Boulevard. More specifically, this is the vacant property immediately west of the terminus of Sunset Drive and also the north of the Wal, Walmart Neighborhood Market, just along Tucker Creek. The current zoning for this property is R1, which is single family residential. And the, as you're aware, the use of a religious facility is not permitted in the R1. However, it is conditionally permitted, and that is why our, our application comes tonight for you. So the applicant intends to construct an approximately 21,000 square foot religious facility. Test to the site is proposed via Sunset Drive and an access easement extending from the northern terminus of Ferris Road across the Walmart property, which is private access agreement that exists today. While the comprehensive plan for the site is designated as single family due to the existing flood plan and the site's proximity to an intense commercial use, like the Walmart, it's not really thought to be feasible or appropriate for this property to develop as low density residential. Staff feels that the proposed institutional use would provide an appropriate transition from the intense commercial use into the single family residential properties to the north and east of the site. Staff have the belief that conditional use permit would not likely result in any harm to the adjacent property. And if approved, the development would be subject to the provisions of Section 1101 of the zoning code, which encompasses the developer review standards. I will touch on the projected traffic impact. With this request of conditional use, it's likely that the increase in traffic could be modest with the assumption of the side devoted to 21,000 square feet of church space. It's anticipated the site could generate approximately 63 vehicle trips per typical weekday and 283 vehicle trips per typical Sunday. This obviously depends on attendance and as well as activities planned throughout the week. And that's where those numbers come from. Staff has recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions that are noted in the staff report. We did receive one comment and opposition, and so I will take just a moment to read that to the record. So just, this comment came from a Marie Fisher. She, her residence is at 2423 Meadow Drive. She is, and I will read this into the record as it's written. No opposition to a church being built. She wants neighborhood to remain neighborhood. Problem will be increased traffic volume. People will be in and out and people already, there's already increased traffic through the Walmart, through the neighborhood. No problem, no current problems in the area, and this is a relatively calmer neighborhood. She would like to keep it that way. Neighborhood should be neighborhoods without churches or even country stores surrounding businesses facing to Prince Street and push traffic that direction. Church traffic will flood into the current subdivision. And that's the end of that comment. That is the only comment that staff received in opposition or support. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Did they state the hours of operation for this outside of Sunday?
They said there, they gave some indication there would be some light activities throughout the week, but they didn't provide, they weren't able to provide really specific numbers as far as what attendance is. But I do think there's a representative from the church here who could, who could provide some more specific information.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Levi, the comment in your report mentioned this having lighter traffic than a residential subdivision in that area, correct?
Not as much lighter, not as much lighter traffic as it would be as this property was to develop in the R1 due to the constraints. You probably wouldn't yield very many lots. So if it were developed as a single family residential use, it probably, it would be a less traffic impact than, than the planned church, but yes.
And for the, for the Tucker Creek Trail, can you help me understand where the new trail is going to, to go? Are they, are they going to completely get rid of the existing trail?
No, no, the, the existing trail, there's condition included there just for, just kind of a housekeeping, since the trail does run through the property just as a kind of a housekeeping condition. Go, placing that trail within a new public access easement or right of way if the applicant was interested in doing so. The new trail that is mentioned is actually, is a spur that comes off of the existing trail would run between the neighbor, the neighborhood market property and the church and would extend across the church property connecting the high school property to the trail. And similar condition included there to put that either in a public access easement or right of way if, if applicant chose so. So that kind of goes to just kind of right there to the, just kind of north of the neighborhood market.
It, is the representative here?
I'm speaking for the church. This is Frank.
Okay, Frank. I'm not, I don't know what kind of church this is, but sometimes churches will have daycares or Mother's Day outs. Anything planned here that would increase the trips per day?
Let me tell you what I, I can tell you. They currently meet up on Front Street and they don't have a, a campus, so to speak, because they're in a commercial building up on North Front. So their plans are, at this time, they have a Sunday morning service. They run about 275 to 325 at One Church. Paul Hudson is the pastor. And they don't have a traditional Wednesday night service. They do have some Bible study in smaller groups, but of course, right now, they're not having any, any church at all. And hopefully they'll be back meeting by June the first or shortly thereafter. But there is not a traditional Wednesday night service currently offered by One Church. Who knows what will happen? You know, it'd be a year before they could, if, if this is approved, before they could get construction out of the ground.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. It, it seems to me to be an appropriate use.
If there weren't a big childcare.
There's no childcare facility offered at this time. Or planned. I see what you're saying through the week, like every day a childcare facility. There, there, there are no plans for that. They don't currently offer it, and that is not in their long range plan to offer daily childcare facility. I see what you're saying. I, I didn't get it first, but I do now.
Commissioners, any more questions for Levi or for Frank? Okay, now we can bring it back in-house for discussion. Comments or concerns?
I'm sorry, I did have one question. I just wanted to find out, since this is a conditional use request, could we put in the conditions hours at this time? Or, or is that not something we could do as far as like operational hours? I know this is a way out, way out as far as in the planning phases of this, but this is a pretty large facility as far as square footage. So can that be included? I see where signage is included, but is there some type of restriction that we could put on the hours of use along with this?
Procedurally, yes, the Commission can apply conditions to the approval.
One thing, this is James, the Planning Director, James Walden. Applying hours of use to a, a church use is, is highly unusual. Typically, because if there are anything that's a late night activity, it's extremely rare. With, with most of these types of uses, it's.
I think I remember this coming up before, so you don't need to explain further. Just, yeah, you don't need to explain further. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Delencia. Any other questions or concerns? Commissioners? I'll make a comment that I think it is a good use of land like Levi identified. If it was to be single family residential, it would be a very limited number of homes and not necessarily an appropriate use. The only, and I, and I do like how they've positioned the building kind of up against the back of Walmart, kind of helping hide that from the trail. And the only other use that I could see here that I think would, would be beneficial would be some sort of mixed use that might have some amenities for the trail. So I think it's a proper use. What do you guys think?
I agree. I mean, I'm ready to make a motion if everyone else is in agreement and no more discussion.
I agree as well.
Well, I make a motion to approve the request.
Who was that second from?
Brian.
Thank you. So we got Delencia and Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have a nay from Ray. Any abstentions? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our request for rezoning of C2 to PUD. Looks like.
So the applicant, you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the applicant, they're seeking to rezone this 3.28 acres, which is at the southeast corner of the intersection of South Donaghy Avenue and Farve Lane. It's currently zoned C2, and they're seeking to make it a planned unit development. The intention is to develop some low density residential there in the form of two, four, and six unit structures with a maximum of 48 dwelling units. We have worked, the planning staff has worked with the applicant to, on, on a few different revisions of the design in an effort to minimize some access and visual impacts of the development. There's still a few corrections and revisions that are going to be required for the plan. Those are noted on page 22 under staff comments. The approved uses for the development would be limited to residential, like I said, with a maximum of 48 units. And all structures that would exceed that two dwelling unit limit would be subject to development review. The comprehensive plan shows this area is appropriate for multifamily use. So the proposed use is duplex and triplex. So the proposed use is duplex and triplex and so forth. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and potentially less dense than if it was developed as apartments. The development will not likely result in harm to the adjacent properties, and as such, planning staff recommends approval with, there's a list of conditions. There's 11, I believe. I can read those out or, that they are. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Watson, I believe you're on too. Did you, did you have anything to add to the staff comments or questions?
No, I've, I've reviewed it. Can you hear me? I'm making sure I remember. All right. Now, I went over them when they were sent the other day, and it looks like everything we talked about. And truly appreciative of the planning commissions or planning department's input on this because suggestions have been made to, to make this a lot more attractive in their design elements. So we're, we're in agreement with every recommendation that's on here, all 11 of them.
Fantastic. Commissioners, any questions for Beth or Mr. Watson?
I have a question for Beth. Hey, Beth, if you remember, I think this location a few years ago, there was an application to do like a mixed, not really office space, but like, like shopping-type area. And I think maybe some apartments on one side. And a big issue at that time was the traffic egress and ingress, I think I'm saying that correctly. And, and just remembering this correctly. If so, what have we done with this proposal to mitigate the factors that caused it to be turned down during that conversation? If you remember the conversation?
I do remember, and I, I know that, that Kevin Watson was part of that project as well. I think part of what's different in this is the, is just the use in general, that neighborhood commercial component that would have been there at the corner is no longer part of the project. And it's just residential, and it's not apartment. So it's not, it, it may not be quite as dense as it would have been before. So maybe there'll be less traffic in this development, but I'll let, I'll let Kevin speak further to it. How, how the two would have compared.
Absolutely. Well, what we had approved before was a conditional use with 50 apartment complexes along the south and east border, and then with a big parking lot in the middle, and then future development of a, of a mixed-use commercial on the perimeter. So what we've done is we've taken 50 units, mixed with commercial and divided it, you know, and, and spread it out over the whole thing, so it's a whole lot less dense and will be a lot less traffic caused by the, the townhome development. So we took 50 apartments, two-bedroom, two-bath, and commercial, and spread it out into 48 townhomes, occupying the whole property rather than a mixed use. And then visiting with the neighborhood, the neighbors to the, to the north, they're in tremendous favor of this over what we had planned before. A whole lot less potential traffic and more consistent with the school across the street, the neighborhood to the north.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments for staff or the owner? Okay, we'll bring it back in. Any in-house discussion? All right, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve with listed conditions.
Thank you, Delencia.
My second.
Thank you, Ray. So we have a first from Delencia, a second from Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Very good. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Watson, with your development.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move to our final item for this evening, public hearing. We have a request to annex lands and down off of Mill Pond.
Yes, this annexation is being brought by Frank Shaw. This area is adjacent to the Round Mountain subdivision. And although the property does not have access directly to Mill Pond Road, the owner of the, Mr. Shaw that owns the property has, does own the adjacent lot, which does create contiguous ownership. The intention of this develop, intention of this is to develop into a five-to-seven lot subdivision. There's not sewer service available at the, the property. Additionally, there's some challenges in, in meeting fire flow at the location. We've got images of the, the street conditions currently based on the requirements of ordinance 99 of 95 specifying procedures for annexations. This does qualify for annexation under that. Staff is recommending that the, the property be annexed as R1 adjacent, because that's adjacent to the existing R1 that's on Mill Pond, so that the lot will effectively become one with that northwest lot off of Mill Pond there. Looking at this, based on the recommendations, Fire Department recommended annexation, Commonwealth Corporation recommended annexation, all the departments, including planning, development, transportation, sanitation, recommended annexation based on the finding that the annexation would have limited impact on current city services offered in the area, resulting in new development, residential development at the site, that any issues affecting provision of adequate fire service and access would have to be addressed at the time of development.
Mr. Shaw, to give you an opportunity if you have anything to, to add?
Thank you. Yes, we're, this is an attempt to annex about seven and a half acres. Lot 9 of Round Mountain subdivision was about 4.4 acres. There is no prohibition in those restrictions and covenants to subdivide it further. So I already owned the seven and a half acres, and after we purchased the 4.4, it seemed feasible then to, with some really nice view lots out the back. That's why it's kind of irregularly shaped on the, on the plat that you're looking at, is that's kind of the ridge that it runs down. And we anticipate having four to six really nice lots looking over the valley and a couple of other nice lots. But the irregularity shows the ridge that's out there. It kind of hangs off the back. It's directly across the valley from Orchard Hill, which we've just completed and, and sold those lots. And there seems to be some demand for this type lot. I would say that Mill Pond Road is in very, very poor condition, but it's not the worst road on Round Mountain. There is a city street out there that's completely gravelled, and there has been no maintenance on it in more than 20 years in places because we've cut trees that have 20, that have 20-year growth in order to get to our other lots that are in the city. So we, we would hope the city would look at this area with some intensity as it's been in the city for many, many years. And it's really gone lacking on city services in that area. But we're prepared to subdivide it in, in conjunction with the, the planning department's regulations. And this will be about a 12-acre tract that will yield somewhere between five, six, seven, and eight lots, depending on how, how it cuts out. We'd like to do it, and we appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Commissioners, any questions for Frank or for staff?
No, this, this appears to be an easy one.
I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Was that Drew?
Yes.
That was.
Thank you. We've got a first from Drew and a second from, is it Ray?
That was Delencia.
Delencia, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Anyone like to abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Good luck.
Thank you, commission. Thank you.
You bet. All right, commissioners, that's the end of our agenda for tonight. Is there anything else anybody would like to bring up?
I'll take Ann's place if there's nothing else to, to, that leads our attention. I make the move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you all. Have a lovely evening.
You too. Bye.